Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, December 2nd, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the Town's webpage. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Hello, everyone.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Pat Riddle from St. Stevens Lutheran Church. Pastor Riddle, I saw you on Main Street the other night. It was good to see you, you and your wife. I think it was on a Sunday. I think we were having brunch.
Indeed, it was, Mayor. It was our pleasure.
Thank you very much for being here with us tonight, and thank you for accepting the invitation.
My joy to be here. A quick word, a scripture, and a prayer. Isaiah 9. "Run to us as a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor. Mighty God, Everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace." My dog Max and I took a walk around our neighborhood this morning at 6:00. I looked into the eastern sky, and I saw one star twinkling overhead. I could see breaks in the gray clouds, and it was under that a deep, beautiful blue sky. And my heart made me think of some words my colleague Pastor Jason shared in church on Sunday. He reminded us that in the season of Advent, we prepare for Christmas, and we use the color blue. Blue is a color of the clear, pre-dawn sky. It's a color that covers the earth in the hours before the sun rises in the east. Thus, the blue of Advent touches us with the expectation and the anticipation of Christmas. Advent inspires hope in us and encourages us to keep watch for the promised light of Christ that will break over us, changing night into day, darkness into light, and filling our lives with joy and holy splendor. Let us pray. Almighty and loving God, be with us in this holy season as we prepare for the birth of Emmanuel. Bless, we pray, our friends, our family, our town, our county, our state, and our country. Hold close, we pray, our public servants on this town council, that what they do in their work may be done with the spirit of wisdom and charity and justice. Help them employ their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life through your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen and Merry Christmas.
Amen. Very good. Pastor Riddle, thank you so much. So good to see you. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Todd Lyle if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Todd. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And I would like to report on our executive session this evening. This evening, we had two legal issues, one issue regarding pending litigation, and one issue was advice regarding agenda items. We had a contractual issue. It was a downtown development issue. It was issues related to a traffic contract. And we had one personnel item. It was boards and commissions. No vote was taken. Do I have a motion to ratify the Mayor's executive session report?
(Inaudible).
Ms. Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Tonight's agenda, are there any deletions on tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to take off of the agenda? Hearing none, we will move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening, I would like to introduce the new Mayor of Ermo, Mr. Barry Walker. Barry, come forward. We're glad to have you tonight, and thank you for coming across.
Thank you, Mayor McDougall and council. I'm so happy to be here tonight. You guys have a wonderful council chambers, and I've got some redecorating to do in Ermo when I get back. But more importantly, the reason why I'm here tonight is to begin to build that bridge of communication between us. I'm not sure how it was over the last eight years, but I'm starting anew as of tomorrow night. I would like to build that communication bridge between our council, your council. We have some similar issues going on with water and sewer, and, you know, we're going to be hitting down Samer Road. I'd like to make sure that that communication is built and start today, working with us and the Town of Ermo. Again, thank you all so much for allowing me to come tonight, and again, I love your council chambers. I have to take my decorating tips from somebody around here. Bring them over there, bring it back.
(Inaudible) brand, yeah.
Let them come over to Ermo. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor Walker, thank you very much for being with us tonight. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Talk to you soon. Our next presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by the Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston, a proclamation, Town of Lexington Arbor Day. Mayor Pro Tem.
Johnny Walker, you want to come forward? Stand there while we read this, Dan? Both of y'all? How about both of y'all come forward? Johnny, I called you Johnny Walker, okay? My mind's gone blank. Then you can.
Only finish to the black label.
Okay. "Proclamation of the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington, declaring December the 13th, 2019, is Arbor Day in the Town of Lexington, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious top soil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the Town of Lexington, that Friday, December the 13th, 2019, is hereby declared Arbor Day in the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, and that all citizens are urged to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and by planting trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaim the second day of December."
Very good. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Dan, how long have we been planting trees for Arbor Day?
Oh, my gosh. I've been here 22 years, and we were doing it before I got here, so I would imagine probably close to 30 years or so.
That's wonderful. Thank you for continuing it too, Dan, and keeping it going.
We're planting in the circular parking lot at 1:30 that afternoon. We're going to plant an oak tree, and we're hoping to get an oak. We've taken some of the trees out a little bit, so we're trying to replace them over that area. And my guys requested we have evergreen trees. (Laughter).
Yeah. Last couple of days have been pretty heavy.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, Chief Terrence Green, if you would please come forward.
It is my privilege to re-present the Strom Thurmond Award to Chief Green for Excellence in Law Enforcement. I was honored to be present when Chief Green was awarded this last November 15th. This is an award that Senator Thurmond started back in 1983 to recognize outstanding achievements in law enforcement. Each year, a law enforcement officer from municipal, county, state, and federal governments is chosen to receive this prestigious award. As stated at the ceremony, Chief Green embraces the community policing concept and strives to solve problems by building partnerships with the community. I would also like to quote Sheriff Jay Coon, who said, "Despite Chief Green's considerable achievements, he has maintained a reputation of both personal integrity and humility, as he is a role model for all law enforcement officers to emulate." Please join me in again congratulating the Town of Lexington Police Chief Terrence Green on being the Municipal 2019 Strom Thurmond Award of Excellence in Law Enforcement recipient.
I didn't say nothing then, so... Well, you know, I want to say...
The only reason I got this award because of my staff, and Brett, and you guys, because you guys give us the twos in two box to make Lexington so safe. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much, Chief. Very proud of you. Next, it's also my honor for Councilmember Kathy Manus, if you would not mind if I read this for you, please. This is a presentation of the National League of Cities Women in Municipal Government Award to Councilmember Kathy Manus. The award was originally presented a few weeks ago during our NLC Summit and Conference in San Antonio, Texas. As stated on the award itself, it says, "For her outstanding achievement and leadership in local government, serving as a role model to the future women leaders and a true advocate to her community. I had the pleasure of working with Kathy since I joined Town Council in 2011. We have worked together on many projects for the betterment of our community, and she always puts citizens first. We're excited that she was recognized for her leadership on a national level, and during the NLC Conference, Councilmember Manus was named First Vice President of the NLC, which is the National League of Cities. And just before she left to go to the conference, she received the best title of all, First Time Grandmother." So, congratulations, Kathy. We're very proud of you and what you're doing on a national level. You put Lexington on a national map, and we're very proud of you for doing that. Let's take a picture if you don't want to.
Put you on the spot. We've got to get used to this.
Well, I want to thank my council members and the staff who were able to go to San Antonio a couple of weeks ago, and I am proud to represent the Town of Lexington and the State of South Carolina as the first person to ever be in the leadership of the National League of Cities. And we all need to go next year in Tampa when I take over as the president. So, I appreciate your support. And, you know, Hazel and Steve and everybody else here have been, they've been very supportive from the very beginning when I started going. We, I didn't have that kind of support, but I do have it now, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to sharing this year as First Vice President and the next year as a president with all of you. And I am happy to receive this Women's Award because Hazel got it a couple of years ago. So, that's pretty good for the only two women to win these national awards. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy. So proud of you. (Applause). At this time, I will move into the Vision Plan Update for December 2nd. The Ice House Amphitheater Update, the amphitheater continues to be a crucial part of our downtown area. This week, it will host two events as part of our annual Snowball Festival. The Craft Fair is on Thursday night, and I believe we have, Walker's not here, 45 vendors?
I believe 57.
57 vendors that will be there that night. Wonderful. It's our first time doing the Craft Fair in the holiday season, and we're really looking forward to it. That again is on Thursday night. Then Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer will play at the Ice House Amphitheater on Saturday night. You can find a list of all the festivities along with times on our Facebook page and on the Town's website. The Old Mill Pond Trail Update, surveying is being completed for the Old Mill Pond Trail. Plans are being made to determine the final trail location. It will be a paved, one-mile-long walking trail that will encircle around the pond area. The current projection is that we will be ready to go to bid this spring. The project is designed to dovetail with the restoration of the Old Mill Dam, so that dam is being put back the same time the Gibson Pond Dam is being put back. So, we're very excited about that. The next thing we will move on to is the Virginia Hilton Park Update. Engineering and surveying is also being done at the Virginia Hilton Park. Master plans include an 8.25 acre expansion with new features and updated equipment. The Pat Jeffcoat Serenity Park was the first project, and it was dedicated earlier this year. Town Council's goal is to improve healthy green spaces within the park while providing a safe, playful, social, and recreational space for all. Each month, I announce some of the events going on in and around Lexington. All are a result of the Town's Vision Plan, which was reviewed and updated in 2017, and again, this summer. You can read the entire Vision Plan on the Town's webpage. Please let us know if you think something that will improve the quality of life for our community. We would love to hear that and share that with all of our neighbors. That is the Vision Plan Update for December 2019. This time, we will hear a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Work will continue on the deceleration lane for the New Hampton Inn near Frank's Car Wash, located on Sunset Boulevard, 378. Please expect periodic lane shifts in this area. Also, remember that it's the holiday season, and traffic's going to be a little heavier, especially on Friday and through the weekend, so turn up your Christmas music and be patient with each other and be nice. And the next Traffic Committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 29th, at 8:00 a.m. on the third floor conference room of Town Hall. And if you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or just a pothole that needs to be repaired, please call 358-7273 and let them know.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will open it up for public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading to adopt the Town of Lexington Development Impact Fee Study, Housing Affordability Study, Capital Improvements Plan, and Development Impact Fee Ordinance. Does anyone here wish to speak to that? Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name's Earl MacLeod, and I live at 317 Country Lake Court in Lexington, South Carolina.
Very good, Earl.
Thank you. I am the executive director of the Building and Industry Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. You should have received correspondence from me last week via email regarding what our position is, and it is basically this, that we'd like to ask Town Council to consider deferring a final reading on this ordinance until such time as an Attorney General's opinion can be reached or sought after to determine the legality of the proposed impact fee ordinance. As stated at a stakeholder meeting that was held back on November 13th, we would like to support an impact fee that is in compliance with state law. We understand the need for that when growth does cause an impact, and we are not objecting to a legal impact fee. We do have some concerns, though, regarding the legality of the proposed ordinance, particularly as it relates to the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee, and we think that those provisions do not meet the legality that the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act requires. We feel that there are some issues also regarding Equal Protection Clause and regarding that some uses would pay the impact fee, others would not. We also have some questions that we haven't really been able to secure an answer because Town Council will be making those decisions, but it would be helpful to know the answers to those questions prior to final reading, one being the implementation date. Is, when would impact fee, if you should choose to approve one, be implemented? It is only appropriate and fair that people have some ability to adjust to cost increases that the consumers will end up paying as a result of that. Another question is that if you've got an approved development that is already under construction, how would it apply to those developments as those that have already received approval, many of which, both commercial and residential, by the way, may have provided some transportation improvements as a result of the encroachment permitting application required by DOT? Those are the basis of our concerns, and we would just ask that a deferral would be appropriate. We want to support an impact fee. We want to support one that's legal. We hope, I'm sure, feel sure you do as well, and we think it would be a wise choice to defer action until that opinion is got, and just take a look at it then and move forward.
Very good. Thank you, Earl. Anybody have any questions for Mr. MacLeod?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Manus.
Hey, Earl, have you all already sought the Attorney General's opinion?
It has to be a request from a member of the General Assembly. We were hoping that if you granted a deferral tonight, we could do that as early as tomorrow.
So, it hasn't even started the process yet?
We have not yet, but we do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow based on your actions tonight.
Very good. Any other questions? Comments? Earl, thank you very much. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Yes, sir. Mayor, how are you?
All right.
Good to see you. Mr. Rogers, how are you?
Good to be here.
Good.
Nice quarters compared to yesteryear.
Well.
I'm Hugh Rogers. I'm a depression baby and a country lawyer. I practice at 123 Harmon Street, Town of Lexington, after having been on South Lake Drive for 20 years, after having been in the Rogers Building about 18 years. But that's enough for who I am. Regarding Mr. MacLeod's reference to the Attorney General, whose opinions are that opinions, I scanned this ordinance today, this proposed ordinance, excuse me, titled. This ordinance shall be referred to as the Development Impact Fee Ordinance for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, and it refers to the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act, Code of Laws, et cetera, et cetera. So, those people studying this proposal, I would say had our statute, our enabling statute, in mind. The main thing, though, I wanted to say was that I don't think if you see fit to enact this law, that it'll keep people from buying houses in Lexington. One of the reasons that will continue, one of the benefits that will continue, has to do with property taxes. Nothing that you can do about that. Pass a little millage from here to there, and so far, you've been very circumspect about that. But I want to compare how the tax law treats homeowners, owners of homes who occupy their homes, as opposed to people who rent, have to rent, and prefer to rent. This is in our town, a comparison. One is a home, and it's reputed to be worth $316,916. It pays a total taxes of $1,918. Compare that with a rental property. This is a duplex, and it's valued at $160,511, about half what this previous example I gave is valued at. It pays a total property tax bill of $5,071.88. Okay, let me repeat. I know my time's running out. $5,071, or property half of what this owner-occupied home pays is worth, which pays $1,891. Getting back to my point, I submit this is proof that people will not stop buying houses because of what you might do tonight. Personal privilege, I just came from Lexington Extended Care, where my good wife of six to some years is recuperating. She used to sit where you sit. She said she's been plugging for impact fees for 30 or 40 years or something like that, and she still is. So, that would make two citizens in favor of it. I think there are protections in here. Looks like it's been carefully thought out. If you collect more than you need, make an adjustment the next year.
That's correct.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Glad to speak to you.
Please tell Maru we're thinking about her. Very good. Hey, Otis, come on forward. Thank you.
I'll be brief. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'll be brief, too. I think that Earl really summed up where the great election and Chamber of Commerce is. You know, we understand the needs that council's going through and the growth that's anticipated not only now but in the future, and how we address that. I think impact fees are one of the things that we should consider as we decide how we fund growth in this particular area. The only issue that our board spoke to and our policy group spoke to, Mayor, was that we have the same concerns that Earl has about the recreational activities and improvements to existing facilities. We support impact fees. I think you all have done a very nice job with who you all had to do it. What we'd like to see, simply because we know there's a shortfall in the transportation funds from the hospitality tax, to be able to fund the projects that are on the books right now, that we'd like to see everything just dedicated to transportation, simply because that's the issue that we hear from the business community, we hear from our employees, we hear from people that are trying to get in and out of Lexington, that we need to address that issue. The chamber applauds you for that, but we would really like to see it narrowed down, if we could, to transportation issues only, and try to solve that problem before we start solving some of the other issues that may or may not fit within the criteria of how a impact fee may be developed and what type of properties and how the fees can be used. So, we congratulate you on being forward-thinking on this, and we look for whatever help that we can give to town in implementing this process and notifying all the businesses of what's anticipated. We know it's coming. We've got to be able to manage it, and I think, just like the bypass that should have been addressed 20 years ago, we missed that chance. We don't need to miss some of the other chances we have to try and address the transportation issue.
issues that we have in and around the town. So thank you very much for your forward-thinking, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Law, thank you for being with us.
No questions, I hope.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak to that? Very good. I will say for a brief comment that we have been working on the impact fee for nine months. It's not something that we just dreamed up last weekend and decided to go forward with. So we've had plenty of time to go through the process, do it in a reasonable fashion, also with a lot of care. We hired some experts to come in and tell us that we were doing it the correct way. We are going to do it by the letter of the law. We feel very good about our position and the way we're going to do it, so we will move forward with it. Thank you very much. At this time, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. I will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. Final reading to adopt the Town of Lexington Development Impact Fee Study, Housing Affordability Study, Capital Improvements Plan, and Development Impact Fee Ordinance. Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. In March, town council adopted a resolution directing the planning commission to begin preparing the documents needed to implement a development impact fee. During the October meeting, the commission recommended approval of the four items required by state law to implement an impact fee. These items are the Development Impact Fee Study, a Housing Affordability Study, a Capital Improvement Plans, and a Development Impact Fee Ordinance. I make a motion for final reading to adopt the Town of Lexington Development Impact Fee Study, Housing Affordability Study, Capital Improvement Plan, and Development Impact Fee Ordinance.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corners, second. Submotion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Paul, when do you expect us to start collecting impact fees for housing?
So council has, in the ordinance in front of them, set a date of it would begin February the first. So that would be for projects that don't have a vested right by that date, and what that basically means from a residential standpoint is if you don't have a land disturbance or a bonded plat, then on that particular phase, then you wouldn't have a vested right for that particular phase. But any phase that's currently under construction or any of those other things already exist for that I mentioned, land disturbance, bonded plat, those, we would not collect at all on those. So when the first residential is actually charged, I don't know, because it might be a year before we have our first home that doesn't meet that vested right qualification.
Mr. Cunningham, how long would it take us to get an opinion from Attorney General, roughly? Couple months? So we have time then to pass this tonight, and then if the Attorney General gives us an opinion back, it says we could change it, and we wouldn't have collected any money in the first place? I'd like to ask staff, ask for Attorney General's opinion for us, so we can clarify this matter and put it to rest.
I think Mr. Rogers said it has come from a member of the legislature.
That's what Earl said.
Or Mr. McLeod, rather. Is that correct?
It's come from the legislature, Mr. Cunningham. So therefore, Mr. McLeod can get it done, and he's got a, effectively, he's got almost safely three months to six months to get us an opinion before we actually collect.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I can't, I mean, February 1st is the date it goes in, so there, I can't guarantee after that point that we wouldn't collect any, but it's unlikely.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Mr. Corners.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, Red, if you could, just if you could address the breakdown of the impact fee, I know Earl had brought up the, specifically the park side of things, and Odie had asked us about the transportation. I know parks is about 7%, 8% coming off the back of my cuff. Can you, do you have those percentages readily available, or?
I can find the dollar amounts. It'll take me just a moment.
Yeah, round figures, just so.
Well, Stuart can look it up if you had another question, so we can come back to that, maybe.
No, that was, that was the substance of my question.
So in, on residential, I mean, there's a whole chart, but I think the majority of the questions revolve around single-family residential, so.
Correct.
I'll quote that. So let's see, municipal facilities is 216, transportation is 218, and then the park and rec on the single-family detached is about 1, or 1285. No, $1,285. Yes, total. I think we may have had that number wrong previously. That's what it is, but.
$16,000 and $218,000?
Those are hundreds.
So that totals to 2,329, so that's what the impact fee on a single home is, is the total of all of that.
Can you say those numbers one more time, please?
So 1285 is parks and rec, municipal facilities is 216, and transportation is 828. And then, commercial breaks down completely differently because it's based on the number of trips that that particular impact has. So it's kind of all over the place. There is no parks fee as part of commercial. We run the calculation on it, but the calculation, as in every other impact fee that's been passed in the state of South Carolina, finds no impact for parks from a commercial business. So there's zero impact applied. Run the numbers, obviously, multiply the zero times something, you get zero.
Right, right. And there's a, there's a formula and an algorithm on the commercial side which breaks up the fees between transportation and municipal facilities?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And can you give us a, I know there's some variance in there, is it even possible to give a range?
It's really all over the place. It has to do ultimately with the number of trips that the business generates. So a business like, on the high end, might be a fast food restaurant that has a drive-through window, so a true fast food restaurant, or possibly a gas station, they generate a lot of trips. That might be $70,000 or more. A business that is, and I'm just giving you glossed numbers, these aren't accurate numbers, but a business that does not have a lot of trips, like, say, an insurance agency or something, based on its square footage, might be much, much lower, like in the couple thousand dollar range. It just depends on that impact. So what the formula does is it uses the same manual that the transportation engineers use that is a trip formula that says this type of business and this many square feet has this many trips a day, and it uses a multiplier to figure out what the impact of that business is. Residential is a lot more straightforward. It's just determined, an average house has this number of trips a day, and so it's based on all that.
Right, right. So just for clarity, on the commercial side of things, it's heavily, heavily weighted towards the transportation side because.
Very.
Commercial side generates the trips, the residential side a little less so, because it doesn't generate that many trips per day?
Yeah. I believe in total, when you mass it all together, your impact is about 80% goes transportation of the total fee. That's different on residential, but residential, we only have about 200 homes built in the town a year, whereas commercial is a whole different animal for the Town of Lexington.
Right. And I think, I think the questions that were asked were valid ones. I just wanted to get those, wanted to get some clarity out there, and it's not an exact science, but pushing 80% on the transportation side, everything else fits in a collective 20% on the whole, when everything's looked at as a collective. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor Protem.
I'm sitting here thinking, and I was struggling a little bit, Earl, Odie, until Mr. Rogers got up and spoke, and, you know, sitting here 22 years and seeing everything grow and change like I've seen it grow, sitting on this council that whole time, and probably came shortly after Mario and Mr. Rogers had done their time serving and that type of stuff, and they're leaders of this community, and if they've been fighting for it that long, and he's very respected and everything, I feel like I'm going to have to move forward with people that invested in our history a long time ago, and this should have been done before now, and we wouldn't be yelling at people out windows and upset and that kind of stuff in traffic. We would be way ahead of the game, as Odie said, the bypass that should have been years ago. So as council's setting up here, we can all sit here and say, what do we do, who are we going to upset, how's this going to happen, but we've got to stand up and be leaders and do it now and not wait. He had a good point, too. I'm not an attorney. I do have a daughter that's an attorney, but the opinion is an opinion, and we spent money on having somebody do this for us that we feel like really knows what they're doing, and I feel like that as leaders, we've got to step up and move forward with this.
Very good. Anyone else have anything they'd like to offer? Yes, sir. Mr. Law.
Mr. Paul, can you just clarify also, is there any additional leeway within the act to collect any more money that would go towards transportation, or is this as written and drafted, going to collect the maximum amount allowable under the act for transportation?
Yes, sir. So it's the maximum allowable amount currently. You have to reevaluate ongoing in the future, so there could be other, that could change over time, and it could increase, but with the studies that are required to be done before this can be adopted, it was determined to be the maximum allowable amount currently.
So we're not leaving any money on the table for.
No, sir.
Transportation.
Not from an impact fee standpoint.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Law. Ms. Manus.
So, Mr. Paul, I think the law says that this has to be reevaluated every five years. Is that correct?
It says, yes, that when you do your comprehensive plan, the same schedule as your comprehensive plan, which is five years. Yes, ma'am.
But this council has decided we're going to be taking a look at this every year, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's what all the discussions have been around, essentially tying the CIP review that's part of the, part of the plan, tie that to the annual budget. So when we're doing the budget annually, we're also doing a review of the impact fee and, you know, making sure we're staying up with it, that it's legal, and if projects need to be modified or anything like that, if there's changes that would allow for an increase or a decrease, then we'd be up to speed on that at a much sooner rate than what would be required by the state law.
So another question, for the 15 years that I've been on council, all I've heard is, well, not all, but just about everything I hear, is when are we going to do something about traffic? So did I hear you say that we have done the maximum we can do in this impact fee on transportation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Any other comments? I would like to share that this council made a commitment back when we reviewed the vision plan. We made a commitment to alleviate as much as we could traffic in the Town of Lexington. This is another part of alleviating traffic in the Town of Lexington. We will continue to do that as often as we can, and with every avenue we can, we will absolutely explore and use it to our advantage to eliminate congestion in the Town of Lexington. We have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Kathy Manus, a second by Councilmember Corners. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corners. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 3524-01-003, located at 125 Ashley Trace Drive. Councilmember Todd Corners.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian M. Chung owns 1.43 acres located at 159 Ashley Trace Drive and has petition to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Property's in town near this winter's own protected residential, and Ashley Trace Drive is classified as an RL2 road. Planning commission reviewed this annexation during their November meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Corners makes a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Councilmember Manus, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I just want to ask you to confirm that Mr. Hanson believes the correct address is 125, and it's written to that place.
Yes. It's written 159 in the background, and 125.
It is 125.
125 is the correct address. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is first reading of an ordinance for a Budget Adjustment Administration. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. During the budget work session, council budgeted $50,000 for social media contract to be paid half from the vision plan and half from the enterprise fund. Social media person has been hired in the events and media coordinator position, and we now need to hire someone to handle the rentals and assist with media responsibilities. This would be a position in administration to be funded 75% from the general fund and 25% from the enterprise fund. The position would be a grade four with wages and benefits for six months of $25,062. To fund the position, we would reduce money transferred to the vision plan from the general fund by $18,800, and the remainder, $6,262, will be charged to the enterprise fund. So they want to add to administration salaries and benefits of $25,100. The net change to appropriations is actually zero. I'll make this as a first, first reading approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corners, second. Set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Lexington District One Educational Foundation Celebration of Excellence in Education Sponsorship Request. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Town council has budgeted $1,000 for the Lexington District One Educational Foundation Celebration of Excellence in Education event each year since 2013. Ms. Julie Washburn, Executive Director of the Lexington District One Educational Foundation, has asked if council would consider increasing the town's sponsorship for the Celebration of Excellence in Education to a Diamond sponsor at $2,500. The event honors the top 10% of graduating seniors from the five high schools in District One. A copy of the request letter and sponsorship form is attached. Due to our budget, I make a motion for council consideration of a $1,000 contribution.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Law, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Law. Martin Luther King Fellowship Banquet Sponsorship Request. Councilmember Law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Lexington Council, I'm sorry, the Lexington County Ministerial Alliance and MLK Celebration Committee have requested town sponsorship of the annual Martin Luther King Fellowship banquet in celebration of the Martin Luther King holiday. In the past years, the town has reserved a table for eight at the banquet with a contribution. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for council consideration of this same level of sponsorship.
Councilmember Law makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second to that motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
Just for clarification, say it's a $300 contribution this year.
$300.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem, Hazel Livingston, Saluda Point Court Ownership Transfer. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, Lexington Medical Center is in the process of developing a new urgent care facility along Saluda Point Court. As part of the approval, the town required new sidewalk. As part of the approval, the town required new sidewalks to be installed, improvements to be made to the accesses located within the existing cul-de-sac. These improvements include installing a small raised planted island within the cul-de-sac in order to better direct traffic flow into and out of the various businesses. The county does not accept this type of improvements within their right-of-way and has requested the town consider accepting the entire roadway for ownership and maintenance. The county has offered to resurface the entire road and address any structural deficiencies prior to transfer of the right-of-way. This road is located within town limits and serves to access numerous businesses. The total acceptance for the town would be a 350 linear foot, feet of asphalt roadway in excellent condition. In summary, the county will not allow the traffic management island to be planted if it remains in the county right-of-way and we require a maintenance agreement for the new sidewalk if not transferred. If transferred, the island will be maintained by the developer, Lexington Medical Center, through a perpetual maintenance agreement. I make a motion for first, for approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manus seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Lyle.
Just like to clarify that as I read this, we will be accepting ownership of road and be responsible for its future maintenance. The tenant or the Lexington Medical Center is only responsible for the raised island and not the actual road. That's correct.
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to bring to attention that even if we don't accept the small section of road, we will have to be responsible for the sidewalks that we acquired that were put in there. And I'd also like to bring to everyone's attention that this is a very heavily traveled area for a lot of residents within the town of Lexington, with your apartments down there and also your Wellesley neighborhood that's down at the end and all the parents that go to, is it Midway Schools?
Mediglen.
Mediglen, excuse me. Mediglen, you're right.
Very good.
And it's a very short road, piece of road.
And that's where the Chick-fil-A is too, isn't it?
Chick-fil-A and Starbucks. And it is a safety when you, if, when people are going in that medical center and then they're coming out with all three of those entrances right there together to have something there to keep them from having a bunch of wrecks. I mean, it's already a nightmare, but when you have that open too.
Very good. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Corns.
As has been noted, the county is going to resurface this 100 yards of road. I'm just curious, do we have any similar such scenario? And what's gonna happen? Somebody could just explain to me what's gonna happen 15, 20 years from now when this thing needs to be resurfaced, because it's not just the first 100 yards of the road that needs to be resurfaced. The entire thing needs to be resurfaced? Or is the county actually gonna go out there and do that because they have significantly more equipment and manpower and we reimburse them for that? Or, because it's not, it's not feasible or fiscally responsible to mobilize for 350 feet of road. How does that work and do we have such a scenario today?
Yes, sir. So we do have similar scenarios in town. One that I can think of, but I can't think of the name of the road, is the road that runs by the post office.
Ellis.
Ellis Avenue, yep. And so Ellis was a privately owned road, privately maintained, and the county did some, we used some county C funds to do some work on it and then took ownership of it and have responsibility for that road in the future. So in 20 years or whenever it needs to be redone, it will be our responsibility to maintain that. So that's a almost identical situation. It wouldn't have met any county standard, so the only way it was gonna get accepted into public road inventory was if we did it. What we have done in the past, and I would assume what we do in the future, when we have, we will collect road pavings to create a package of them. And then generally, we have gone along with the county who has a large bid for road pavings and then we get it done as an add change to their bid. So we get the volume pricing when we do sections like that. Because normally, we don't have, even in a neighborhood where we might have, you know, a mile of road, say, in a neighborhood, probably the entire area doesn't need to be repaved. It might be 1,000 feet here and, you know, deep hole patch there kind of thing. And so we package all that up and then have, have, in the past, bid it with the county. And then in some instances, we've done it ourselves. It just, you know, we have to take a look at the financials at that time. If it's like it is now, where roadwork is expensive and hard to get people to bid on because they're so busy, you, we would have to do it that way. But there have been other times when getting somebody to do 300 feet of road, you'd have seven people asking you to do it and they'd be fighting to have the lowest price. So it just depends on, on the environment at the time. But we've, we've done it both ways and we just have to make a decision when we're doing it, what's the best way at that time to do it.
Understood. And I would, and I know these are one-offs and pretty unique, but I do, as I have expressed, I feel like this is a less than optimal way to do business, for them to hand off to us ongoing maintenance of a road when we have no ongoing revenue stream like C funds, which they have to handle that maintenance. So I, I would just like to ask that in the future, that if we could go ahead and ask the county and maybe put some type of, just, just begin a conversation to say that we're gonna need access, we're gonna need real promised access to C funds, which are set aside for the purpose of road maintenance, to take on road maintenance in the future because it's unrealistic for us to take on that responsibility without those assets. And I think there's gotta be some way to work that out for them to either seed us some money when we choose to do something like this, that we escrow until such time as it would need it, or that there's some type of memorandum of understanding in place that 15, 20 years from now, when the bills come due, that we have some type of granted access to those funds. I have no idea how we need to structure that, but from my understanding from staff, this, this is not going away. There's gonna be more of these down. And like, I'm never voting for another one again unless we have some type of memorandum of understanding that we're not gonna be handed a liability with no ongoing revenue stream. And so if you guys, I don't know, if we could be creative and try to find a solution to that, I think it would be beneficial to everybody.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, one more.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyle.
I'd join Councilmember Corns and also add, Mr. Poole, if, if we are going to be creating this kind of liability and if we are going to be, as Mayor Pro Tem Hazel mentioned, that this is a safety concern, if it's a county road with which we've allowed development to create this safety concern in the event that we're unable to escrow these funds through C funds or some other county source, is there not a way to monetize or escrow those funds from the private developer if we're gonna allow them? I distinctly remember us giving a variance on setbacks or for that particular development in question here. And so if we're gonna give them that opportunity, is there not an, also a requisite opportunity for us to be able to charge to the private developer that same upfit for the very same reason that Councilmember Corns just mentioned, that we're, we're taking on a liability and it sounds like we're allowing a problem to cause a safety concern and then we're accepting a liability without a, a revenue source to, to fill that liability for the sole purpose of safety, which, again, it's a perpetual cycle.
So, yes, sir, there's, there's two options available. One is rarely available in town. It's the development agreement or a DA, and you have to have a certain size property to qualify to, to enter into a development agreement. And we rarely have developments that are that large. And the other's the impact fee that you guys just passed. So that is a recurring, I mean, it's a source of revenue that can be used for transportation. So those are really the two options that we have available for a later fee. We can make improvements upfront and those can be charged to the developer or done by the developer. Actually, they don't pay for them, they just do them themselves. But for something that, that happens later, that falls to, to, you know, either an impact fee or some other funding from the general fund.
Well, just, just to reiterate, I, I would again like to see some kind of gap with the county, but in the event that that's a bridge too far, no pun intended, I do think it would be, I'd like us to relook at this development agreement. I mean, if there's a state statute, if there's an ordinance, if we can look at it, because we just talked about how much traffic and volume Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, just these few tenants are causing, you know, I would take the logic and flip it over and say, if there's that many vehicles running over this small strip, it's gonna be worn that much faster. And so it's gonna need whatever type of upkeep at that significantly logarithmically more.
Sure.
Than, than just a regular swath of road, so.
Councilmember Corns and Lyle, I respect what both of y'all are saying and I agree with y'all that that should happen, but I don't think we should punish this section right now since it's not in place and we should go ahead and make it safe for the citizens that use it every day and, and work on that for the future.
Yes. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Corns.
I may, yeah, I would, I mean, just as a point of clarification for, for those that aren't looking at the maps and don't understand, this is not, this is literally 110, 115 yards of road. It's not a huge area, so it's not a huge liability. It's more about the principle of the matter. And Mayor Pro Tem Livingston, I'm, I'm gonna support this. I just wanted to register my frustration at it before I support it, just to say, like, let's not let this happen again and get out in front, because it just puts us in a bad spot.
Does anyone have the cost of what the medical center is putting into that piece of property? What the value of that building will be?
Four million. John Swaggin', $4 million.
So will, there'll be some residual taxes that will come off of that, correct?
They do not pay property taxes.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very good. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. Boards and commissions appointments. Ms. Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ms. Lisa Gibson submitted a boards, boards and commissions application and indicated an interest in serving on the traffic committee, which has two vacancies. Ms. Gibson is a town resident and previously served on the planning commission and board of zoning appeals. A copy of her application is attached. I am happy to make a recommendation for council's consideration of this appointment.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker seconds. The motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. Streets and Infrastructure Project. Councilmember Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The project to improve drainage issues on Rainwater Drive is currently being funded from the Transportation Contract Services account in the amount of $19,380 to the contractor, Martin &amp; Son Contracting Incorporated. This consumes a significant portion of the current operating budget and could impact the Transportation Department's ability to respond to other emerging needs for the remainder of the fiscal year. Approval is requested to pay for this project from the Streets and Infrastructure Fund, which will allow the transportation budget to pay for smaller projects on an as-needed basis. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Corns makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds. The motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business from Councilmember Ron Williams. Cribs Sandwich Shop Handrail Request. Mr. Williams.
Joe Crib, owner of Cribs Sandwich and Sweet Shop, has requested the town of Lexington install a handrail for a pair of steps located near the front entrance of his business just off the sidewalk of South Church Street. Steps were installed on private property outside of the SC DOT right-of-way during the one-way pair project in order to provide South Church Street sidewalk access, which is equal to or better than the prior to the construction. These steps were built to code, which did not require a handrail. An attachment has been provided showing the original pre-construction conditions in 2017 versus the improvements made by the town in 2018. The town believes a public expenditure of funds is justified due to the effect on the private property created by the town initiated improvements.
Mr. Cunningham, is this, are we allowed to actually fix these stairs back?
You're not typically supposed to spend dollars in a private property. However, my understanding in this scenario is that the dangerous situation, if you will, is exacerbated by the public, whether including the project. I think that you seem to have a problem hanging out on that for the public purpose. Sort of something possibly that the public might, maybe, and relevant.
Thanks, sir. May I make a motion that we approve this installation of the handrail? Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Todd, Councilmember Lyle seconds. The motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. The 2019 Vision Plan Update. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. In July of 2019, members of town council and town staff met to review current progress and accomplishments of the vision plan and to identify future goals. The retreat gave an opportunity to get updates on projects, to prioritize future projects, and also to develop funding strategies. The overall goal was to chart the next steps to ensure the vision plan's continued success in implementation. I make a motion for council approval of the changes to the vision plan as discussed in the 2019 retreat.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manus seconds. The motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Council meeting agenda distribution procedure. I wish Mr. McLeod would have been around for a minute. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the November 18th work session, council discussed a modification, mostly in part due to Mr. McLeod's request to the procedure for distribution to the public of council agendas and supporting backup materials. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for council approval of that revised distribution procedure.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds. The motion, any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Next, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Kathy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving holiday last week. I, I gotta say, it was real exciting with our first grandchild, Olivia Catherine Colton, as we welcomed her to our family. Happy birthday to Steve Baker this week on Friday. So happy birthday. We hope you have a fabulous birthday. The mayor mentioned all the events for the town's four-day. We've gone from three to four days. Sunball, I wish, Snowball Festival, because we all know how I love the sun. We hope you will come out and enjoy all the festivities and the kickoff the holiday season. And I'm excited about Thursday night in amphitheater. I hope everyone can go there lots of, you can get a lot of Christmas gifts there. The Board of Zoning will meet this Thursday here in the council chambers at 5:30. Town council will not have a work session in December, but we will meet again on January the 6th at 6:30 for our council's regular meeting. Many members of council and staff attended the National League of Cities City Summit in San Antonio a couple of weeks ago. It was a great conference to learn from other cities and, of course, they wanna learn from us. And I gotta say, every year that I go to that conference, I come back being even more proud to be in the town of Lexington because we, some of, some of our cities and towns throughout the United States, they are suffering and they're having a hard time, but we're not doing that here in the town of Lexington. And I am proud to be here on council for the town of Lexington and I love my town. It's an honor for me to represent my town and my state on the national level as the first vice president of the National League of Cities. Town Hall will be Town Hall will be closed December 23rd, 24th, and 25th as we observe the Christmas holidays. Please be safe, have a good time, and everyone needs to remember the real reason for the season. Thank you for watching Town Council in action tonight, and have a good night.
Very good. Councilmember Manis, thank you very much. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Very good. Are there any questions from the news media? I don't believe we have any with us tonight. Any public comments? Are there any public comments regarding tonight's agenda? I see my man Jonathan Manis back there. I think Jonathan needs to ask a question. Haven't seen him in a while. He didn't make the trip with us this year. We missed you. Wish you could have been with us, but we understand. You're here doing your homework, making good grades.
Lisa's truthful.
It's good to see you, Jonathan. Glad you're here with us tonight. Yeah. Any other comments from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, December 2nd, 2019. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week, and the video will be available on the town's website, lexcom. Without objection, we are adjourned.